This is the Village Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of Thursday, November 7th, time is 7:00. Welcome to everyone here and everyone watching at home. If you're present here with us tonight, you're of course welcome to speak at any time during our meeting, either during the public comment section, or if you'd like to wait till a particular agenda item comes up, you're welcome to speak then as well, or both, if you'd rather do that. So if you would please call the roll.
President Sal.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Colling.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Village Manager Scolera.
Here.
Village Attorney Molina.
Here.
Village Attorney Mars.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Kathy Haley.
We have a form, if you please rise and join this report.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America, into your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the digital, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business tonight is a presentation, a very happy presentation we get to listen to every year, which I'm pleased to say, and it's by Tom Sisalak on the Thousand Tree Planting Project. So, Coach.
Thank you for inviting me again this evening. It's seventh annual, which is hard to imagine. I remember when Bob Upus came out and took some photos, that was seven years ago. It's hard to believe that time has passed already. But I'd also thank Mike Collins as our outstanding resource of intelligence and teaching abilities. This is a very exciting, very rewarding project, and it's actually a very outstanding family project. We've had planters in previous years as young as one year old, all the way up to 101 years old, so there's a lot to do for each member of the family if they would like to join us. This year will be on Saturday, November 23rd, starting at 10:00 a.m., goes till about 2:00, 3:00, at the Riverside United Methodist Church, which is at 82 Woodside Road, and we will meet downstairs in the church dining room, little theater area. We break up into 10 planting teams after we have our teaching seminar, which Mike Collins and I go through the different specifics about how to plant the seeds, how to locate a perfect location for an oak tree that might be there in Riverside for 200 or 300 years. Once they kind of realize that fact, they understand the importance and the actual benefit that they are providing to the village. We also have a very outstanding hot cooked chili dinner afterwards for all the tree planters that might be getting rather cold and tired from the day of planting. I do have the picture that I also brought last year, which is always amazing for me to look at. Some of you have seen it before, some of you haven't. It's a picture of a tree that's probably in the northern Midwest climate around the Great Lakes in the early 1900s. It illustrates a tree that is perhaps 1,000 to 2,000 years old. When the immigrants from Norway, Finland came over to America, they worked all day chopping down the virgin timbers, which they thought had an unlimited source of trees, and these trees were then used to build Milwaukee, Detroit, Chicago, sidewalks, buildings, boats, everything. So sadly, most all those virgin timbers were cut down, but there are quite a few that survived, those that would have been in valleys, that they couldn't get their horse, wagon, cutting tools down into. Even here in Riverside, if you're over by the Boy Scout cabin, there are some oak trees that are, in my estimation, about 300 to 400 years old. Maybe Mike Collins and I someday can do some actual testing to see the exact age. So when you're over in that area, take a closer look, they're right near the cabin itself. These tree that I brought along, they'll roll around, but maybe you can identify some of those. All the trees that we plant are native to this northern area of Illinois, native to Riverside. In fact, most of the 3,000 or 4,000 seeds that I gather every year come directly from Riverside. Some of the trees only produce acorns or hickory nuts once every three years. It takes a lot of energy for the trees to produce 10,000 or 20,000 seeds. The tree that's right next to Riverside Plumbing, by the way, is the tree that has the largest cap in that tree. It's called an overcap oak, and that tree only produces acorns once every three years. It's the one that you're always stepping on and rolling on and kicking the acorns out of the way. In that box, there's also the Ohio Buckeye. That came from the largest Ohio Buckeye in the United States, which is at the world headquarters in McDonald's, right in the center there by the Hyatt Hotel. They actually built the hotel specifically around that tree. There's a shag bark hickory, the little tiny seed that looks like a garden pea is an American basswood. There are hazelnut, which is a tree, even though we use it in coffee and cookies, it's actually a tree, very tiny. Those hazelnuts disappear like, as soon as they're ready, the squirrels are on those, and it's very hard for us to find those hazelnut seeds. And they're also on Northern red oak. This year, we're going to plant probably about 15 different varieties of seeds at the Methodist Church. I'm in the process of also storing and saving a lot of seeds. There probably are 15,000 to 20,000 seeds in different trays at the church. As long as they are kept dry, low humidity, they can survive for many, many years and still be viable as growing seeds. Here's another item that I brought, which are some samples of different types of wood. These are actually from a company up in northern Wisconsin, Ashland, called Timeless Timber. A friend of mine who was a Spanish galleon explorer actually discovered, this was about maybe 25 years ago, he was looking for some sunken ships in the bottom of Lake Superior, and he had to move all these gigantic logs out of the way that were down 30, 40 feet deep, and he decided one day to bring one up and found out that these logs were some of those same trees you saw in the picture, which were floated down the Great Lakes, the rivers, to Chicago, Detroit, Milwaukee. But the best quality wood, which is heavier, denser, when that took on water, it actually sank. So there are thousands and thousands of these virgin timber logs still in the bottom of Lake Superior that are just like pristine new because the water is so cold, low oxygen content, no saltwater. So they're now bringing these to the surface, and they're very valuable. The one sample there, which is actually a combination of bird's eye maple and red birch, you'll look on the edge, those are just little veneer pieces of bird's eye maple and red birch because it's so valuable. The other samples are solid piece of wood of that particular type. The ponderosa pine, the white pine, you'll see the growth rings are large space where the red birch and white oak are really tight and close. Some of these virgin trees, like in the picture, would actually grow 80 growth rings to an inch because there were so many, so close together, they grew extremely slow. Some carpenters, when they're working with that wood, can't even get a nail through the wood. They have to drill a hole and then put the nail, they're so hard. There are two sheets that I'll pass around. You take one of each, and I'll pick up the extras later. Just gives you an idea of what some of the teaching materials we will use Saturday on November 23rd. One is explaining a little bit about the different varieties we'll plant. The other is explaining how the new rookie planters will actually plant the seeds. We don't actually dig a huge hole. We just press a small hole into the ground. The seeds go about two to three inches in the ground, that's all they need to go. The best planters, of course, are all the squirrels native to Riverside and throughout America. They planted probably 90% of all the trees we enjoy. The challenge, of course, is see if these little seedlings, when they do sprout, can survive through floods if they sprout and are three or four inches tall. If the deer find them, they're nice and tender and very sweet, so they get the diet of many deer that we have in Riverside now. So it's a challenge for these trees to grow to a good substantial size. The other thing that we're going to start teaching again, that'll actually be new for this year, we're going to teach some of the uses for all of the trees, which a lot of children don't really understand, that there's a tree in South America called the perro tree, which the sap that runs out of that tree is a latex material, and that's what we use every day to produce all the tires, all of the rubber material that we consume every day, every year. It's actually a white sap material that's very stretchy and springy. Columbus even saw a little boy bouncing a little piece of this material, and he traded somehow with that little boy, took it back with him, and did some more research through his, I guess scientists back in that era. But that sap is then vulcanized, it's boiled, to get the black color, they add a little bit of charcoal, and companies like Michelin, Firestone, they have very special additives, which are all top secret, they don't let other companies know, so that way the tires are more durable. So we're going to do some of that instruction, along with all the other, many, many uses for the wood that we use every day. I will finish with one last comment. Every year, we also have two people that we dedicate our tree planting towards. One of our church members is always one of the special honorees. This year, it's going to be Cherie Tierry, lifelong member of the Riverside Methodist Church, our Sunday School teacher and director. And our second honored individual is actually a Native American Indian. His name is Nick Hawkins. He was a good friend of mine. He's an Ojibwa Indian from the Lock de Flamo Indian Reservation in northern Wisconsin, and he crossed over, passed away about a year ago, but he was a very highly respected Native American Indian throughout the entire Midwest, throughout the country. He spent a lot of his most valuable years as a teacher, teaching the Native American Indian culture to students. He also traveled throughout the world to a lot of different countries, teaching, and even earned two Emmy Awards for his teaching and his Waswagining Indian village up in northern Wisconsin, so wherever in that area, his wife and children are still running that Waswagining village. So we have those two special honorees this year that we're going to dedicate the tree planting to. Any questions anybody might have? Yes.
Tom, thank you very much for this initiative. I believe that you said in another venue where I was, that you were talking about this, that residents who may have lost trees this year may also come and obtain seeds that they may use to plant on their own properties.
Very good quantity of seeds that are available, if anybody would like to even just pick those up, and I'll teach them how to plant those seeds since we're losing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Give us the day and time one more time.
Okay, the day once again is Saturday, November 23rd, Riverside United Methodist Church, 82 Woodside Road, begins at 10:00 a.m. Make sure everybody dresses warmly, hat, boots, gloves, everything.
What sort of tracking have you been doing on the trees planted in years past? Are we seeing them come up as seedlings? Are we getting good results, I guess, from past year's plantings?
Yes, we are. Right now, of course, it'd be rather difficult to spot them since a lot of the leaves dropped off, but I know that Bob Finn on the Landscape Advisory Committee, he has taken pictures. He was there with the first several years, and he's taken pictures of a lot of these little seedlings. Right now, those that we planted seven years ago would be in the vicinity of five to six feet tall. They're still kind of in a long spindly structure, but there are hundreds and hundreds. I know that Mike Collins always states that only about 25% will survive. I'm a little more optimistic since we actually look at every one of the seeds that are selected for the thousand seeds that are planted, so I think the percentage is higher, but once again, that means just sprouting, they still have to survive through all the floods, the deer, the squirrels, everything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You should know better than to bring things for us to play with when you're trying to talk to us. Next up is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Mr. Galligan?
Alex Galligan, 3234, South Harlem. Good evening, Mr. President, trustees, those in attendance, and to those watching at home. Sir, I come before you on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce in the season of thanks that we are in. The Chamber would like to publicly thank the Riverside Show Club, again, for their temporary usage of their planters, line up along Quitch Street, again, beautifying Central Business District. We'd also like to thank Terry Lynn Colodin and all those who volunteered their time last Saturday for the fall cleanup that occurred over several hours in volunteerism that people put in for that day. And lastly, I have only but one event coming up, is our annual holiday stroll. It'll be on Friday, December 6th, here in the Central Business District, and at a later date, I will have all the times and schedules for Santa's arrival, Froxy's location, and where we can find her else. And that's all I have for today, sir.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? We'll move along then to the President's Report. First up, official business. We have three motions, commission appointments. We have Elizabeth Cosse to the Parks and Recreation Board, Linda Krokowski for the Landscape Advisory Commission, and Thomas Lombardo to the Economic Development Commission. So I'd ask for a motion and a second for these appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sussman, second by Mr. Ballerine. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman. Aye. Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Colling.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries, and thank you to all those folks who have agreed to serve their village in these capacities. I do see Ms. Cosse here tonight. Did you want to, would you like to be sworn in this evening, or would you like to come by at another time and be sworn in?
I'll be sworn in.
Okay, let's do it. Ms. Haley, if you'll do the honors.
(Inaudible) So I need you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Elizabeth Cosse, do solemnly swear. I, Elizabeth Cosse, do solemnly swear. That I will uphold, that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And the Constitution of the State of Illinois. And that I will faithfully perform the duties. And that I will faithfully perform the duties. Of the Office of Parks and Recreation Board Member. Of the Office of Parks and Recreation Board Member. For the Village of Riverside, Illinois. For the Village of Riverside, Illinois. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Nice to put you on the spot, right? The only other thing that I have this evening is I would like to echo the thanks to the Riverside Springs Ahead Group that came out this past weekend and did the fall cleanup. It was, we did have a group for St. Mary's who came out to help us, about 12 young folks and some of their, not so young folks, came out to help us over the weekend, so we really appreciate their help in beautifying our village. And that is all I have this evening. Mr. Manager?
All I have is one item to report to the board and the community, and that is, I think, two meetings ago, the board approved a ordinance giving the village staff to work with Bound Council and Spear Financial for the refinancing of our limited tax refunding bonds. I'm proud to report to you that the bond, the village received two bidders, and Park Ridge Community Bank came in with a 1.32% bid, and the Park Ridge Community Bank winning bid produced a low interest cost in dollar amount that the amount of the issue was increased by 4,000 to 559,000. So that's good news for us, that we will see savings, and we are going to be moving forward with that refunding. And that is all I have.
Congratulations to you and to Ms. Francis, who, as usual, is on top of everything. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items, any trustee need to have removed?
I would like to remove C, because they have, there's a sentence there I'd like to get clarified.
Okay. So we'll remove C. In the absence of C, I would ask for a motion and a second to approve the remaining consent agenda items.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Sussman. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Colling.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Motion carries. Returning to item C, the filing review of historical commission minutes of September 23rd, 2013. Mr. Ballerine?
The question I have is under miscellaneous, fourth paragraph, fifth paragraph, Judith Sistek, reports that the train station has received a grant to be a visitor center. And I just wanted clarification on, you know, is it a matching grant? Who's paying for the grant? Who's the grant from? I didn't know we were...
We, it's news to me, so I'm working to clarify that with Chairperson Seizik, and once I do that, I will share that with the board, but I'm not aware of any grant that we applied for, for a visitor center in the train station.
So we'll get to the bottom of that and bring it back at the next, at the next meeting.
So I just want to make sure that these minutes don't go in the public record with something that's...
Moving on to reports of departments and commissions. We have a number of items. Ms. Francis, would you like to lead us through?
The first item I have is the estimate of the 2013 property tax levy for the Village of Riverside and for the Riverside Public Library. The library will be having their meeting next week, however, they did provide me the numbers that's anticipated to be approved by their village board as their estimate as well. As you can see, based on the estimate, it's a potential increase of 4.28% with new EAV and also the 1.74, which the village is limited by property tax extension limitation law. Just to give a brief update or recap to the new trustees as it relates to property tax levies, the village will historically, historically, any community in Cook County will overestimate their property tax levy because the county will then go ahead and adjust it. If we do not overestimate and we underestimate the dollar amount, then the village basically loses that money, and then it compounds itself over future years. So that is the purpose for that. So it's not to say that the levy will actually increase by 4.28%, it's just we do that overestimate And also, you will notice that for debt service, there is the outline of the items that will be abated. 644,000 approximately in debt service will be abated as part of the property tax levy. And also included is the levy for the library, which they have in as being 1,025,758. And we will be, and I, any questions with regard to the levy estimate?
Just a question about when we're going, we'll talk about what to do with the money, you know, what, how we're going to reallocate or not reallocate it.
Reallocate, essentially what we do, when you're talking about allocation, is with the levy, we basically distribute it amongst the various allocations for the cap funds. Essentially, I've been talking to Attorney Mars with regard to how our levy is done, and because we're so far in the fiscal year and the levy is upon us, I'd like to see in the future that we streamline the levy so that we don't have all these different line items, and we just have something for general corporate, but since we're already at the point of the levy, it seems appropriate. Basically, what we do is we, there are all of these particular lines, nothing that will, for example, you'll see the proposed budget and where the tax cap is, everything with regard to those various lines are under, so if you recall, when the auditors were out, they state that property tax is utilized first, and if for some reason, the expenditure isn't higher than the property tax, then you would notice that it would then be committed under the fund balance, for us to be utilized for only those particular services to be provided to residents. And in that case, we only do that, we only have assignments rather for parks and RAC. All this money is utilized first, and then we utilize user fees, et cetera, thereafter.
Further questions? And the hearing on this will be on our next meeting on November 21st.
Yes, which is, the next item is the announcement of the public hearing for the 2013 tax levy ordinance. In prior years, it hadn't been the practice of the board unless it was 5% or greater, and it's not required by statute unless it's 5% or greater to have a tax levy hearing, however, and speaking with the village manager, we felt it was appropriate, just as a good practice for the public to have a tax levy hearing, even if it's not warranted. And so that will be scheduled for the next board meeting of November 21st.
Next.
And the next item is the announcement of the public hearing for the budget ordinance, which is obviously in line with the property tax levy. The budget ordinance, the budget document, a draft form, will be available at the village. It is draft, the tentative one prior to the hearing. We're still inserting schedules, trying to maximize and make this the best budget document we've had. Village of Riverside's never submitted to Government Finance Officers Association for the budget document award, and what I'm working with department heads and the village manager to try to make this the best budget document we've had thus far and submitted, and in turn also obtained the budget award, which, like I said, Riverside's never received.
And then we're going to have a party?
Absolutely. So the budget is available, you can request it electronically, but like I said, it's a draft form as of right now, because we're still updating it and making refinements as we can, because it's well in advance of the public hearing.
So any questions on these items before we move on to the next agenda category? Okay, moving on then to ordinances and resolutions. We have an ordinance that you would like to explain to us?
Yes. Again, working with Attorney Mars, speaking with staff, we were discussing some issues with inefficiencies and how we could streamline certain processes, and one of it happened to be actually the water bill and the processes in which we go through in tagging various households, billing, things of that sort. One of the items is with regard to, I'll just kind of, I'll start with the tagging. Basically, we're proposing changing from the $75 charge at the time of shut-off, it being a tagging charge instead of a shut-off charge. We have a number of individuals that wait basically until the 11th hour. Instead of reaching out to the village and saying, "I can pay on such and such a date," they wait until they're tagged and basically reach out to us as we're about to shut off their water to pay their water bill, which obviously uses village resources and puts undue burden then on other residents that are paying on a timely basis. So we feel that having a tagging fee versus a shut-off fee would deter some of this behavior. We will provide appropriate notice. We will do two billing cycles, because we bill half of the village each month, so we'll do two billing cycles. We'll provide an insert, basically notifying them that if they reach the point of being tagged, they will be charged the $75 fee. If they are then shut off thereafter, there wouldn't be an additional fee unless they come in and they pay. The reconnect fee is $50, and then if it's after hours, this is something else that is new within the code, they would have to pay an after-hours or a weekend fee, because the village is paying overtime to employees to come in to them restore their water service. When the village does work with residents, if they need to get on a payment plan, if for some reason they became recently unemployed or things of that sort, we do work with residents and then keep track their payment agreement and follow up with them if for some reason they fall behind. Usually, most that do go on the payment plan, follow it, and then they no longer need it two or three months thereafter. But like I said, this is more for those that know how the process works and basically wait till the last minute to pay the village or contact the village. The new item in which we've updated relative to the water bills is in regards to a final payment certificate. With a lot of closings going on in the Village of Riverside being a non-home rule community, we don't have a transfer tax, so sometimes attorneys do not call us prior to the closing. And in speaking with Attorney Mars and knowing some, what other Cook County communities do, some other communities require what is called a final payment certificate, which essentially, our ordinance will be recorded against all the pins within Riverside, so if someone does a title search, our ordinance will come up basically as a liability, as something that needs to be taken care of prior to closing. So at closing, if the attorneys do their due diligence, they would ask, "Where's your final certificate of payment?" They would provide it, and the closing could go forward. If they did not have that final payment certificate, the attorneys could then settle up and take care of things at closing, versus the village potentially being out, whatever They would provide it and the closing could go forward. If they did not have that final payment certificate, the attorneys could then settle up and take care of things at closing versus the village potentially being out whatever that final water utility bill is for that resident. Because we do in fact have times where people don't call for compliance and also don't get the final payment in for the utility bill, and we try to pursue them, but sometime, we can't file a lien once the closing is concluded. So sometimes the village is at a loss if the person's just walked away from the property. So those were the changes, trying to increase efficiency and streamline processes. Basically, what would happen if they did not get a final payment certificate, we would afford a certain amount of time for them to pay that bill. If they did not, it would be forwarded to the new owner. We will provide notification that the bill is being transferred to their account, but like I said, we would provide ample notice to not only the prior resident, but also to the new one. And I've had occurrences where you'll get the call from the new resident saying, "I didn't know this was supposed to be taken care of." And then they'll reach out to the attorney and they'll sort things behind closed doors and the village is made whole. And that's essentially what we're attempting to do is make sure the village is made whole for any of their costs and fees. Additionally, another item that, which is listed, is in regards to someone illegally tampering with village water or perhaps tapping into the water with not having an appropriate meter. Instead of basically issuing a fine, we would assess how much potentially they've used in water and/or any penalties that apply. It gets us to streamline the process. It hasn't happened very frequently, but it has happened where a person doesn't have the meter yet installed and is able to turn on the water and essentially use it. We've caught it, but like I said, this just streamlines the process and affords us the ability to then bill the individual versus, and it also provides due process if they request a hearing or review, et cetera. But it streamlines our process as comparison to what we have right now. And I believe that covers it.
So first, I would ask for a motion and a second to adopt an ordinance amending various sections of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to water and responsibility for water bills.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton, second by Ms. Collins. Any questions or discussion?
With the tagging issue, so if a person, if the bill is due on the first, how long would it be before the tag would occur?
They, if the bill is due on the first and they don't pay, we would essentially send out a penalty, a late notice saying that you have, I believe it is 15 days to pay, and then they would have an additional 10 days. Basically, we allow additional time. The code is actually our guideline, but sometimes with manpower, with public works, we're not able to get out and tag. So usually, individuals are afforded additional time just because water main breaks happen and things of that sort. But they're afforded in excess an additional 30 days.
So before the tag was done, are, will they be notified that they're going to be...
They get two additional notices.
Will they be told that they're going to be getting tagged because the process is changing?
We'll put notices in the regular utility bill notifying them that there will be now a tagging charge and not a shut off fee that'll be inserted. And then also in the newsletter, we'll make sure that that's publicized there as well. So they'll have two different separate notices in case they don't look at the newsletter or in case they don't read the insert that we actually put in the bill. But in addition to that, they'll also receive the notice, they'll receive the letter from us that goes via certified mail. But even prior to that, we send out postcards showing that they're late on their bill and they need to come in and pay.
And when you say that they're late, will it say on there, "If you don't, you're going to be receiving a tagging fee of $75"?
With our certified mail notice, it does say that, but we can modify the letter and the format to dictate...
Just as long as they get it before, especially because you said there are people that have played the system before, so.
Yes. Yes. We'll provide appropriate notice on, and I will speak with both Kevin Walter and Donna, who handled that process, and perhaps we can modify the actual tag, putting a sticker for the next cycle, the next two cycles, for those that are being tagged, basically noticing them, saying, "You're not going to get charged this month, but in future months, if this, if you are tagged, a $75 charge will apply."
Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
Trying to figure out how to ask this question. Multi-unit owners, two flats, multi-big apartment buildings, are those generally individual water bills or one water bill to the landlord?
Usually one bill. It's usually to a property management company.
I would assume that those type of bills tend to be larger, much larger, because they encompass a lot of properties. And it would, it would seem to me that somebody that would be, that would benefit from playing this game would be somebody that is dealing with a larger bill. So I'm just wondering if there should be a structure that, you know, the fees for multiple units are considerably...
There is. Attorney Mars and I work together to structure it as such that it is on page. If you look at the bottom where it says that a, I'm sorry, a $50 fee will be charged and then 150 for multifamily units, $25 charged for every unit above four. So basically, it would compound upon itself for those that were, because we actually tag each individual door.
Okay. Okay, here I got it. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier when I said the $75 charge is the reconnect, the $50 charge would be the tagging fee.
Anything else? This is very nice work, Ms. Francis and Mr. Mars. Real nice job. Hearing none, I'd ask you to please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Balleray?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Francis.
Thank you.
Next up is an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to use designations for bed and breakfast establishments in residential zoning districts. And Mr. Mars, I think you're going to walk us through this?
As the board will recall, we, last month passed the, a broader ordinance addressing various special uses and uses in our commercial zoning districts. As part of that, we were looking at bed and breakfast establishments and, not only in the commercial districts, but also in the residential districts. At that time, the board was concerned about the Plan Commission's recommendation, making them permitted uses in all the residential districts, making bed and breakfasts in particular, permitted uses in all the residential districts. And after Trustee Pollak had polled some of the members and learned that they hadn't maybe quite understood that they were recommending that, it was remanded back to the Plan Commission for further discussion. We met last month and after some back and forth, they unanimously recommended that bed and breakfast be special uses in all the residential zoning districts. So that despite the fact that we have these new regulations concerning bed and breakfast that govern fire codes and parking and all these other aspects of them, we will have an opportunity to have somebody come before the Plan Commission and the board and sort of talk about the specifics of their particular proposal, an opportunity to maybe put some additional conditions on it if they're appropriate and if we feel the impact's warranted.
So first, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance relative to use designations for bed and breakfast establishments in residential zoning districts. Motion by Mr. Pollak, second by Ms. Sussman. Need further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Balleray?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mars. Next up is an ordinance amending the Village Code of the Village of Riverside Illinois relative to administrative adjudication of municipal ordinance violations. Mr. Scolera?
This item before you is in response to objectives identified in the CMAP plan for Riverside. As a result of the plan, the village board had directed me to explore options to improve our property maintenance provisions and/or procedures for Riverside. And so in speaking with our village attorneys, staff, we have provided a recommendation before you to move our housing adjudication from Maybrook to here in-house, which would be heard by hearing officers that currently also hear all of our traffic parking citations. Staff feels by making this transition away from Maybrook, that it will reduce the amount of time that a citation is issued and provide for greater control by the village in trying to reach a compliance on the part of the homeowner. We are, we have sat down with both hearing officers and we have discussed the plan. Staff is currently working with the compliance officer and our public safety or police personnel who administer the adjudication hearings to ensure that we have the logistics all worked out before initiating this. Our goal is to do so, if approved this evening, beginning January, to have all hearings here in Riverside.
So first, I would ask for a motion to approve an ordinance amending the Village Code relative to administrative adjudication of municipal ordinance violation. Motion by Mr. Foley, second by Ms. Collins. Discussion?
I just have a question. Approximately, how many of these cases do we hear in a year? Or is there even a...
We work very diligently with individual property owners to try and avoid going to Maybrook because once we get into Maybrook, a property owner has a lot more time to try and comply with something and the process really gets drawn out. We've been successful in that, once we identify an issue with a property owner, trying to do it back and forth, we reach compliance. But I think, Bob, how many would you say annually do we send? About a dozen?
It's about a dozen, I think, from a ticket standpoint.
Okay.
That was probably increased adjudication for the management process.
One other thing, the board should also be aware that the ordinance as drafted includes more than just property maintenance, other local ordinance matters that are legal to bring before a local adjudicator. Some are not moving violations. For example, even written on a local, you will still need to go to court, but certain things like local ordinance violations, say minor in possession of alcohol or something like that, a local retail theft for a misdemeanor amount can be written on a local. Those would now come before the ALJ. And the benefit of that would again be you have an ALJ that you know who's already working in this area, and also you get to keep a much greater percentage of all of them.
I mean, this is really an integral part of our effort to increase property maintenance and building code enforcement. And I think this is going to greatly streamline the processes. Another, yet another nice piece of work by staff. Mr. Pollak?
Was wondering if Peter could quickly say who these, the positions that are described in the ordinance? What, I mean, some of them are, most of those are existing municipal employees who will fill those positions, correct?
Correct.
We're not hiring anyone new?
No.
Do you know who will be designated in these different positions?
Well, currently...
What position in the village will be the hearing officer? What will be the...
Well, the hearing officer, we currently, there are two current hearing officers. One is a new hearing officer that I work with Chief Weitzel to identify. And the hearing officers are individuals who have background in the field. One is a judge, retired judge, and another, I believe, is a hearing officer in another community.
So they're not exist, the hearing officers are not existing employees?
No, they're contract employees. But we have existing contracts with two, we normally...
So we would use those same, and do we...
And then the compliance officer...
Do the cost of the hearing officers, are that, is that covered by the fees collected?
Yes.
Okay. And then the other positions, the enforcement administrator, system coordinator?
The system coordinator is a current employee in our police department. It's a shared position between the chief's assistant and our lead dispatcher. And then the compliance officer will be the, currently, it's Karen Byrne who we utilize. She is our compliance officer.
Very good. Thank you.
Anything else? Sayil, if you'll please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Balleray?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Motion carries. Next up is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract with the Public Safety Services for paramedic services. Chief Camaro?
Well, Chief Camaro is here to answer any questions. I'll just give a brief summary or introduction to the item. The current contract before you is a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract in the amount of $450,613.20 with Public Safety Services, Inc., for paramedic services for the Village of Riverside for December 15th, 2013, through December 14th, 2014. PSSI is our existing vendor. We have been with them since 1996. We have been very happy with their services. Chief Camaro was able to negotiate with them this addendum to the previous contract. The dollar amount for the contract is, reflects a 1.5% increase over last year's amount. And we feel that at this point in time, it makes sense for us to renew for a one-year term with PSSI. Chief is more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
So before we get to that point, I would first ask for a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a contract in the amount of $450,613.20 with Public Safety Services, this is a quick bunch, for paramedic services in the Village of Riverside from December 15th, 2013, through December 14th, 2014. Mr. Foley? Motion by Mr. Foley?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sussman. Now we can ask questions.
Last year, the rate was reduced? Two years ago, it was reduced?
Two years ago, it was reduced. Last year, I think they held it at the same...
The last two years, it's been flat.
Okay.
So zero percent, despite increases from the company operations.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman?
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton?
Aye.
Trustee Pollak?
Aye.
Trustee Balleray?
Aye.
Trustee Collins?
Aye.
Trustee Foley?
Motion carries. Thank you, Chief. So that's it for the ordinances and resolutions. We now have three discussion items. The first is a discussion of a temporary 90-day moratorium on the issuance of any permits, business licenses, or zoning approvals related to the installation, construction, licensing, and operation of non-retail sales tax generating businesses within the commercial corridor on Harlem Avenue in the Village of Riverside. And this is a discussion we've had prior with what we're calling the Harlem North Corridor. It has been recommended for approval by the Plan Commission unanimously. So before we get into our discussion, I guess I would ask our village attorneys first just to describe the process, the procedure from this point forward with regard to the moratorium?
Sure. The moratorium is a, is an ordinance which is a temporary, basically a stopgap or a hold on developments that would not generate retail sales tax, actually, for a certain period limited so that the village could consider a more comprehensive ordinance that might create regulations that deal with non-retail uses in an area that's been targeted to primarily hold retail businesses. And it's basically a way for you to say, "Stop, let's hold off on anything for a limited period of time, in this case, 90 days." The Plan Commission would then consider regulation substantive on a permanent basis that would create rules that would favor retail uses with appropriate exceptions and appropriate procedures in order to safeguard property rights when... procedures in order to safeguard property rights when it wasn't practicable to require it in a given instance. Usually that would be done through special use permits are typical, where the usual way you would create regulations of this kind is to create what's called a retail overlay district. And basically, it would establish certain areas that are targeted for retail sales tax generating businesses. The public reason for that, or the public good of that, is both to alleviate property taxes, to generate sales tax, and the idea to create retail establishments that then support one another by encouraging cross-marketing, cross-shopping. But it would, they would typically also allow for exceptions where someone could prove they've marketed the property actively, they've tried to get a tenant of that kind, and for whatever reason, maybe market's down, bad economy, they just haven't been able to do it. And then you might have to make exceptions if they, if they show to the, to the village a satisfaction that they can't do it. So that, those are the substantive regulations that would be discussed. The 90-day moratorium is so you don't get a bunch of things coming in under the wire while you're considering it. The moratorium isn't necessary in order to consider those regulations. And so if there's deemed no need to do that, or it's maybe would be not as popular, for whatever reason, you could not do the moratorium and simply go to considering creating a retail district if you wanted to.
And so really, the discussion tonight would be is to decide whether or not we want you to draft an ordinance to create the moratorium.
Correct. It's not for approval.
Right. And the one thing that I would report to the board and to the residents, one interesting thing that's, that I may well have happened because of this discussion, is the, the agent who was representing the, because the three properties we're talking about are the former Sarah Lee Building, the dry cleaner, and the strip mall right there on the corner. And the agent that was representing the strip mall now also represents the owner of the dry cleaner. And of course, the former Sarah Lee is now under lease. So that we have, that we have someone who already is jointly representing those two properties suggests, and we've, and we, the village has spoken both with the, with the agent and with the property owners, they obviously are already interested, if they can, in finding someone who is a retail business because it's in their interests as well. So just with that background, I will open the floor for discussion.
Those two pieces of property. Let's just say that somebody came along and leveled those two pieces of property and we were able to put up, I don't know, let's just say a Starbucks came into town. What type of retail, I mean, that's a retail store. What kind of tax would actually be generated to this village based on the average sales of a Starbucks? You know, how much money are we talking about?
Well, there are two options, I guess. One, one is the 1% sales tax. And if it was a restaurant, there would be the 1% places of eating tax, which is already earmarked, however, to the, to the road system. So you're basically getting 1% of the, of the sales, the sales tax for given, a given business, whether, really whether, we're still getting the other percent if it's a restaurant, but like I say, that's already earmarked for, for roads. So 1% to 2% of the sales tax revenue is what, is what we would be getting.
I think typically, probably, based on my experience, a 3,500, 4,000 square foot retail store, $9,000 or $10,000 a year in sales tax that a village would, would see at 1%. It's, I mean, it varies depending on the amount of sales business is doing, but that's probably the average.
You know, I don't think those properties are big enough to really generate interest from a major, major retail that could, that could make a difference in our, in our sales tax. I just don't like the idea of us regulating property rights. I mean, those are, you know, those are owned by, those two pieces of parcels are owned by people that want to sell them and, you know, if they can, we have, we have laws, we have ordinance that says you can put certain businesses in certain places. You know, if the, somebody comes along and wants to buy the laundry and put in another laundry, we're basically saying they can't do that for 90 days. And I, and that could make the difference between that laundry selling or not. And that's, that's that gentleman's piece of property, that's that gentleman's livelihood, that could be that gentleman's retirement. And I don't think that's fair for us to do that.
Well, and as the attorneys pointed out, there is a middle ground. I mean, if we, if we're at all interested in even discussing the possibility of a retail overlay, we could do that in the absence of a moratorium. I mean, if your point is, is you want to keep the options open for those, those properties, you could just not have the moratorium and then move forward and take a look to see if it's, although by your reasoning, really, if it doesn't justify the moratorium, it doesn't justify the retail overlay.
Go ahead.
Mr. Pollak?
Take this opportunity to kind of get a little bit broader picture here. The reason that we're even, if anyone would even think about something like this on the local level is because of the tax structure in the state of Illinois. It discriminates in favor of retail sales and the disfavor of retail services. Every village, most, all villages have the same dilemma. They have retail districts, they don't want services, they want sales. And there's nothing, there's no reason why, other than that's just the way they do it in Illinois, that we tax sales of products and we don't tax services. Villages hate banks. Generally speaking, I should say.
Except for the ones that are...
Too strong, too strong of a word, I apologize. They discourage banks because they take up retail sales spaces. Villages don't like hair salons because they don't generate, you know, they, I shouldn't say they don't like them, they prefer product sales over services. And that's just because of the tax structure in Illinois. There's no reason it has to be that way. So I guess, in a sense, I'm making my pitch for the state of Illinois to balance the playing field in retail districts by having...
And I'm sure they're listening.
I'm sure they are listening. But also, to point out the reason why we're kind of boxed into this, if we want to get, you know, revenues, you know, and you're right, it's not much, but there is no, you know, golden goose out there for a village like Riverside. You've got to get the $5,000, the $10,000 wherever you can and add it all together, so. And finally, I would say, and as you can see, I'm leaning toward being in favor of this, I don't feel really strongly about it, but I, I think 90 days is a short window and maybe something good can come out of it. But I also would view it as potentially a benefit to the property owner because we're going to take a step back, we're going to look at this and try to maximize the potential of the property. And hopefully, during that 90 days, we would be in direct partnership with the broker, the property owner through the broker, and working together and trying to develop a plan that benefits everyone. So, yeah, I think 90 days is a short enough window. If during that 90 days, the broker came to us and said, I've got this great tenant on the line, you know, will you do something? Oh, you know, maybe, you know, it's not set in stone, but, but I think it's worthwhile to kind of get the message out there that we're looking at this and we're trying to do something positive.
I ask the overgraph notice is in your future. Ms. Sussman?
I agree with Doug and was actually going to mention that there's nothing that stops the owner from coming to us or coming to Peter and asking if, if the moratorium can be waived for specific business that he or she may have on the hook. I think also, you indicated that the realtor has been spoken with about this anyway and didn't seem to raise any or did raise any concerns.
Not really, not really, because they would like, they would like to try to sell it to a retail establishment anyway.
Yeah, and I, I think it's actually a good opportunity to step back and look at a contiguous piece of property and say, what is its best use? What is its highest use? And in 90 days, we're not stopping anybody from saying, coming back to us and in 90 days, try to get our hands around it.
And the other, the other factor that the Plan Commission talked about was the 90 days coincides with the opening of the Costco.
Right.
And so that it does give some time after the opening of the Costco to kind of try to evaluate what kind of effect that might have on the local market. So that's another factor.
And the Plan Commission supported it unanimously? Is that what you said? I would support it.
Other discussion?
As long as they, as long as it can be waived so that if the property owner does have something else, I would be in favor.
Can I have you down?
Yeah, what we do is we, you know, build into the ordinance the fact that it's going to terminate in 90 days or when the village board decides to terminate it by passing another ordinance, so.
Whichever is sooner?
Whichever is sooner.
Then I would argue, why spend the money to draft an ordinance if, if one of those tenants or one of those owners comes in with a service business and we're all sitting here saying, we won't trample his rights, we'll waive it? So why, why spend $1,000 drafting an ordinance that we're going to waive if, if someone comes on the hook?
Joe, I don't think we said we'd waive it. In my case, I said I would listen to the request for a waive.
So, so what you would say is, is if somebody came in front of this board with a service business, you would, you would tend to move more towards the, no, we're going to wait till the 90 days.
Well, it would depend on where we are in the 90 days. I would assume that the Plan Commission recognizes they've got to get a lot of work done in the next 90 days, how close they would be to coming up with a plan. And they're, it's hard for me to say without knowing the facts of where we stand on this, how I would, would vote or what I would say, but I don't think that for the cost of, I don't think we should not do this because there's a cost to drafting the ordinance.
Regardless of the cost, I'm on the same side as Joe. I am, I am a great believer in letting the market drive the, what happens in the market. And I, it makes me very uneasy and I'm not in favor of placing those additional restrictions on what a property owner can do to maximize his or her own value in the property, so I would not support it.
Mr. Foley and Ms. Collins, what do you think?
I have an agreement with Joe and Ellen. And I've changed my mind because I really feel that this will work itself out once the Costco opens. I think there will be, not a huge demand, but there will be a demand for developable property along Harlem Avenue within proximity of Costco. I've seen it happen in other communities when big box stores come in. There is a slight rush to gain property near those stores because of increased traffic.
Collins, what do you think?
I tend to think no. I'm not sure it's worth it for the amount of money and I do have a problem with putting restrictions on property owners as to what they can do with their property.
I mean, we have a, we have a four, yes?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. I think, I understand what people are saying about putting, quote unquote, putting restrictions on property owners. I guess I look at our role as, as one of trying to, to balance what's right for the community with what's right for individual property owners. And certainly, you know me well enough to know, I think that way about zoning as well. And I think it is important for where we sit on this side of the table that we do think about that kind of balance and consider that in, in, in how we look at this opportunity. Because I do look at it as an opportunity that rarely presents itself, to step back and even see what happens with a Costco and wait those three months. It may very well be that what happens would have happened anyway. I mean, we don't really know. I, I would ask that we put the moratorium on, that we certainly be quick to respond to the request for an allowance if a property owner comes to us for that, but that we just take this step back. We've talked about Harlem forever. And Harlem seems to be a second thought when we talk about zoning, when we talk about development of the downtown area, and yet Harlem is part of our core business district. And I think this is, just gives the Plan Commission and us some time to consider this without doing any harm because we can remediate that harm, so-called harm, if the owner comes to us. And so that's what I mean by, by kind of looking at it from both sides as, as people who have the opportunity to help shape Riverside and, and business, as well as people who, you know, want businesses to thrive and people to have those choice, personal choices. So that's why I support it.
I think that my concern is that, since it is a smaller property, I just don't think the tax dollars are there to justify this. Actually, if the Sarah Lee property was in the mix, my thoughts may be different because it may be a larger amount then that we're talking about, but it's just the little section there and I just don't like the precedent that we're setting for the little amount of money that we're talking about.
And I agree that we have a responsibility as, as trustees to, to act in the best interests of the village, but I see that that best interest relates to things like regulating whether or not we're going to have strip joints in the village or something like that. I don't see, this to me is a little bit too much social engineering, I just don't believe in it.
So I believe we have a yes, no, yes, no, no, no. So four to two, so there will be no moratorium. Next item for discussion is a discussion of the United States Army Corps of Engineers' request for a letter of intent to support the proposed Upper Displains River and Tributaries, Illinois and Wisconsin project as described in their final feasibility report and integrated environmental assessment dated October 2013. This follows up on a report issued by the Army Corps of Engineer that with regard to Riverside specifically, had some proposals in it concerning the Groveland levee and the potential building of a flood wall and also the possible raising of Park Lane and some other items. They have requested, they requested on October 23rd with a deadline of October 28th, that we sign a letter of intent and perhaps the best way to get this, the letter of intent basically would say that although they, they say it's non-binding, it basically says we are willing to, to meet the financial requirements for the projects as described in the, in the, in the feasibility report. So this, this is the, let me just briefly read the, the letter that the village responded on October 24th and then I'll open it up for discussion among the trustees. Dear Mr. Zucker, he's the project manager for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. Thank you for your letter, for your email requesting a letter of intent from the village of Riverside. And then I identified that our next meeting is November 7th and that we could not meet his proposed October 28th deadline. We will need clarification as to the projects enumerated in the draft letter of intent. You ask us, quote, "to support the construction of Groveland Avenue levee and non-structural floodproofing and buyouts," end quote. Neither of these projects is described in detail and it was my impression that the latter was not included in the final recommendations included in the report. We are happy to work with the Army Corps to develop realistic solutions to the flooding that affects our village and neighboring communities. We cannot, however, support anything without considerable more information concerning the nature and extent of the proposed projects as well as viable alternatives. Before we can reasonably consider signing a letter of intent, we need a detailed response to the comments we submitted during the public comment phase. The village submitted two letters of public comment. We would also like to pursue the possibilities associated with the BNSF and Forest Avenue bridges that could significantly lower the flood stage. And we need to see actual numbers attached to the potential cost of these projects to our village. As you know, there are no cost estimates included in the report. So that was the initial response because they had asked for a response by October 28th, which we obviously could not do because we hadn't met yet. So with that background, I will open it for discussion among the trustees.
Peter, where are we at with the Army Corps in regards to the punch list for Swan Pond?
It's all completed.
100% complete.
Did you get a response?
I did.
Is that this one, the November 1st one?
Yes.
You did, so.
And let me share this with the residents as well. President Sales and Manager Calera, thank you for your quick response to our inquiry. Not quite by the 28th, but I'm working on a more detailed response to your letter and hope to have that to you soon. I would like to respond to one part of your email that requests information regarding the cost of the proposed projects. We are prepared to share that with the village with the understanding that this information is not for public consumption. At this time, we do not want cost estimates to be made public with the idea that would give potential future bidders an unfair... give potential future bidders an unfair advantage for possible construction contracts. If you would like the financial data on the, on the proposed projects, we can provide that as long as it remains with the village and is not published. If the village wants to publicly discuss or release the information, we could give ranges of costs that would be considered inclusive of the possible cost of the actual project. And that's basically the substance of his, of his response. And I don't think I have to tell anyone here how I responded to that. Is there any interest among the trustees in signing this letter of intent?
I'm, I'd be very hesitant to do it at this point.
You know, they had a website that you were able to go on and ask questions or if you wanted to have, I, I asked questions on the website as a, I never got a response. So I, I'm, you know, that, that would, I'm sorry.
Mr. Daley?
Mr. Daley, Steve, right?
Yeah.
I assume you may responded to the website by any chance? Did you, did you get a response back?
Uh, no, uh, no. I can see that.
Yeah, actually you should come up to the.
Stephen Daley, 171 Maplewood Road in Riverside. I submitted a detailed, detailed letter comment, laying out a number of questions and concerns and did not hear back from the Corps. I know that two, two residents, at least two of us in Riverside have reached out to Jeffrey Zirker and asked to meet with him to talk specifically about alternatives that we'd like to explore. And we've been rebuffed. We would love to, you know, really try to find, work with the Corps and, and, yeah, there are a lot of creative people in this town, a lot of, you know, a lot, a lot of people smarter than me who can, who've come up with some interesting ideas for, you know, a solution that would have no adverse impact on anyone and, and we'd like to, we'd like to work on that with the, with the Corps, but we need them to open up to us.
He said no or he didn't respond?
Specifically, one, I know that one request for meeting was just rebuffed. He said, "No," the, like, the quote, "meeting would not be in order," I think was the, was the, were the exact words. The, the one thing I, you know, I'd just like to emphasize and I, and I don't want to beat a dead horse here, but, you know, I really appreciate the fact and a lot of us appreciate the fact that President Sales on October 2nd and, and late September communicated very clearly the village's questions and concerns to the Army Corps of Engineers, you know, asked for, you know, some, it's a very common sense request for information. One of the requests was to explain the fact that in 2010, the Army Corps of Engineers declared this a bad idea. The Army Corps, Jeffrey Zirker, you know, told the landmark, the levy extension, extending the levy would create more problems than it solved. Now, the Army Corps of Engineers has had a month, has had your letter for a month, President Sales, and, and he's, they're still saying, "Well, we'll get back to you later about why we changed our mind." I've seen some, you know, I, I, you know, I read somewhere that it may have been, well, they refined the, they refined the modeling. Well, the way I would translate that is, you know, the model is a computer program. It's a, you know, with algorithms and so forth. So if they refined their modeling, that means to me they changed their computer program. So they got one answer out of the computer program, so they went back and changed the computer program and now they got the opposite answer. And when I hear that, red flags are raised in my, in my head and I want to ask, why did you change the computer program? And I think those questions deserve an answer. Thank you.
And since, since I'm in reading mode, let me, let me just share with the, the residents the, the sustenance as a part of this suggested letter of intent. Now, I, I will say in, in the defense of the Army Corps that this, and they say, quote, "The letter of intent is not intended to be legally binding," but rather our expression of continued intent. But listen, listen to what, this is what they want the village to sign off on. One, to provide without cost to the government all lands, easements, right-of-way and relocations necessary for the construction, operation and maintenance of the project. Two, to comply with all applicable provisions of the uniform relocation assistance and real property acquisition policy as amended and its implementing regulations for all lands, easements, right-of-way and relocations that must be acquired for the project. Provide during the period of implementation a contribution necessary to make up the non-federal cost share equal to a minimum of 35% of the total project cost, which we don't know what they are, for the authorized projects we intend to support. To hold and save the government free from all damages arising from the implementation, operation, maintenance, repair, replacement and rehabilitation of the project and any related betterments except for the damages due to the fault or negligence of the government or its contractors. And lastly, to operate, maintain and rehabilitate the project upon completion without cost to the government in accordance with the regulations and directives prescribed by the Secretary of the Army. And we're supposed to sign this without any cost information and without any specifics with regard to the actual projects being suggested.
They forgot my firstborn on Ellis. They forgot my firstborn on Ellis.
Did any municipality sign this? Are we aware of it?
I, I don't know.
No. I think the other community at River Forest was asked and they, they also had stated that they were not willing to sign the letter without knowing the, the true costs.
So what do we do? Just let it go for now?
So I, I see shaking heads that we have no interest of signing this letter.
I think the ball's in their court.
Okay. Mr. Butter?
Trustee Foley's comment about the punch list from the last project?
Sure.
I spent a lot of time recently on the riverbanks, but I had not spent much time in the center of Swan Pond. And I think it was probably about 15 years ago when we built an ice rink and then they graded it so it would be better suited for an ice rink. Subsequent to that, that area was used for a soccer field. And I apologize, I haven't had time to go to a rec board meeting, but I just assumed that that area would be used for recreation again. And I had walked the perimeter, but I had not walked through the center of Swan Pond until about a week ago. I haven't had a chance to measure, take any photos, but it seems like it's worse than a cow pasture in terms of deflection. I'm guessing there's holes that are upwards of eight inches deep. So I, I, I don't understand how they could have, you know, I saw them remove the trees and I saw them grade, but it's, 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 it's like a cow pasture. It's unbelievable, except on the perimeter and the center, how deep some of these potholes are. And I can't imagine a kid running through there to play soccer or, or anything. So I just, if the punch list has anything still going on it, you might want to check that out first. From the hill, it looks beautiful, but when you walk through the middle, it's bad.
Let's go down here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Butter.
I have one more thing that I'd like.
Yes, sir.
Gint wasn't here from the Olmstead Society, so that was my, my, my key. But I would like to thank the Olmstead Society for all the workdays that they have provided the village this year, especially the work that they, the workdays that they have done in the various different recreation parks. You know, the, we, Recreation Department overs, you know, has jurisdiction over quite a few parks and it's a lot of, it's a lot of land and we have a small department and public works is stretched and, you know, the, the Olmstead Society does work in those parks that, you know, that, that's very, very beneficial to our village and our department and our residents. So thank you very much.
Okay. So that takes care of the letter of intent. And our last discussion item tonight is a very important one and, and this is not a discussion that, that we need to even attempt to try to resolve this evening, that we can at least get started on this discussion. And that is the possible merger of the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals into, into one, one commission. We, we have before us the recommendations of, of both the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals and they are in conflict. The, the Plan Commission unanimously agreed as they, to, that they would favor a planned, a combined Plan Commission ZBA, which they feel would be more resonant and business-friendly and makes sense from a number of standpoints. The Zoning Board of Appeals, although not unanimous, there was a, a majority of commissioners that, that felt that, that the, the two should be kept separate. And the, the primary reason for the, the ZBA's opposition to the combining really is, is a, I guess you would almost say a philosophical one. Their point is, is that, is the question of whether you, since the ZBA is a quasi-judicial body, whether you want the same body that is charged with, with making regulations, with establishing the, the regulations and the ordinances to also be overseeing requests for variances to those ordinances. So that's their basic objection to it. So with that background, I'll open it up for discussion about whether you think this is a good idea. Alba?
I'll start. I didn't, I, I wish I'd prepared a little something for this, but kind of shoot from the hip here, there's, there's, in my mind, there's, there's so many reasons to, to consolidate it. So I guess I will start by responding to the zoning board's concern, which in a philosophical sense, theoretical sense may make some sense, but it's the village board that determines whether a variation is granted and it's the village board that determines whether, or makes the legislation. So we're already acting as, as legislator and, and judge of zoning variations as a zoning board. And in my experience, I have found a combined Plan Commission and Zoning Board to actually be more effective because they understand why the law was written and they're able to fairly judge variations because they, they have a, a greater understanding of the history of the zoning ordinance, the history of rezoning, special uses, the whole broad picture of, of zoning administration. Other reasons I feel strongly about consolidating it, one is, is staffing. It is a major job to staff a zoning board and it is a major job to staff a plan commission. And when you have two separate bodies, you're doubling the workload essentially for this village staff. A village our size can't afford that. We need to, I, I think for, just from a cost efficiency standpoint, the consolidation makes sense because now we have, have one meeting a month. Staff can prepare for that one meeting. They can prepare better than they can for two meetings because they're just, it's just one meeting. And, and that is something I've talked about in the past. I want us to do a better job, not that we're doing a bad job now, but I think we can do better at how we staff all of our committees and commissions. And, and by consolidating this, I think that's a huge step in us becoming better or allowing our staff to do a bet, even better job supporting our, our volunteer residents who are on the zoning board, plan commission. So those, I think, I think that summarizes it. I'm sure as we discuss this further, I'll think of other reasons to consolidate it. I will, just so everyone knows, I mean, I have a history at, being a city planner. I've worked with both separate zoning boards and plan commissions in, in the Chicago suburbs and I've worked with the consolidated plan commission and zoning board in this area. And in my experience, it's, it's, it's night and day. The consolidated group works better, more effectively, easier to staff, you can staff it more effectively, you get better decisions. And really that is, I, I went to a seminar recently about development review process and the presenter said something that really stuck with me and, and he, he was able to summarize it very well. He says, "The real question with zoning boards and plan commissions and EDCs and all this is, are they adding value to the process? Are they adding value to the final decision that's being made by, by, by the village board?" And in my experience, having a combined group improves your, your ability to add value to the process, to add value to the final outcome from the process. So that's why I, I, I do feel strongly that the consolidation works. Now, in fairness, I think, you know, the one disadvantage of it, and, and I, I, I think it, it is a disadvantage. You have less people involved in local government. Instead of 14 people, now you're seven or you could go to nine, but seven is, is what makes sense for a variety of reasons. And that's never good. I mean, the more people involved, the better, but the cost of having that far exceeds in my mind the benefit. And I'm, think, I, I'm confident we have other volunteer opportunities in this village that people can be involved. Anyone who wants to be involved has an opportunity to be involved. We just won't have as many in the area of planning and zoning if we consolidate. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Further comments?
Yeah, I agree with Doug and I'd like to also clarify that I come, I, I think about this from the position of a volunteer. I was not only a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, but I was chair of it for a number of years and I was also on the Plan Commission. And having been in both those positions and now here, I, I think that the community would be better, residents would be better served by having a combined board. And my reasons, because I come at it a little differently, they are a little different. First of all, I'd like to say that, that the most effective zoning commissioners are those who, who have either served when there's a period of a lot of zoning appeals going on so that people understand what zoning is about, or they've also served on the, on the, on another commission, particularly on the Plan Commission. So, and, and in our community, we're a small community and we all know we haven't had very many appeals in the last five years. Now, part of that's the economy, but in general, we don't have that many appeals. And so we have these wonderful volunteers for zoning who don't meet. And I think in one instance, they didn't even meet for a year. So a refresher, Mike, we've talked about this, Mr. Mars, people, you don't meet for a year and you don't really have a background, you haven't developed the rules and you, I think you come at it from a disadvantage. And I, and, and I think that's important. So I think that knowledge and learning and, and talking about it is, is important. And I also think from my, so that's sort of from a, from having served on both commissions. And from a trustee's perspective, what I've realized is that some of the best recommendations that we've received have, for changing in our zoning court code have almost been iterative. The zoning board has thought about it and they've gone to the Plan Commission and then the Plan Commission has thought about it and they've come to us. And I just think that there's a, a learning, a more efficient way of doing this, which is for the single body to have these discussions, to have these aha moments. Oh my gosh, we have to rule on this, we have to make a recommendation on this today or next month, but something's not quite right and we need to step back and look at the zoning code. We need to step back and talk to the trustees. And I just think that that iterative process is better served by a combined commission. And Doug, I don't know if I would have said that six, a year ago or two years ago, but I think that the community, we talk about residents and wanting to, to, to improve the process. I think the community would be better served by combining the two.
I, I agree with both of them and I can't speak anywhere near as eloquently to, to those points that, that I agree with from both trustee Pollock and trustee Sussman. I also just really believe that especially in a small village like ours, it enhances the facility and the transparency to our residents, residents of working with the village towards something, to, to have a much more clear-cut avenue for how we are going to control those types of planning issues.
And hey, we have plenty of volunteer opportunities.
Yes, we do.
How about the side of the table?
I agree with everything that has been said. I think Doug just missed one word when he said meeting and that's scheduled meeting. I think that's the most, I think that's very important is there is a scheduled meeting. We know when it's going to happen, the residents know when it's going to happen. We can get our notices out in time. There's no decision on can it be Tuesday, can it be this Tuesday, can it be two weeks from Tuesday because so and so and so and so and so. from Tuesday, because so and so, and so, and so, and so. I'm 100% in favor of this.
I'm in favor, but I think that I agree with what's been said, and that the people who make the rules know best when a variance is appropriate. And there's a whole learning process that needs to go on with the Zoning Board of Appeals when they don't know what the rules were, and then they have to try to, we've talked about before trying to infer what people were thinking when they did things. There wouldn't have to be that when it's the same, because they know what they were thinking when they did it. And so they know what's an appropriate variance.
I'm in. Well, as you know, this is, this is a discussion item. There, there is a decision that needs to be made tonight, and, but it leads into maybe just a little bit broader discussion about what I have in mind with the, with the whole commission review process in general. What I would suggest moving forward is that we basically do what we did tonight with regard to, to plan and zoning, to this question of consolidation. And, and in the, in the coming months, every meeting, we will take one or two commissions. We will review the reports that were given to us by the commissions in response to our requests for their input, and we can work through and see if, if any changes are necessary. And then once I have the direction from, from the board, I can then meet with, with Manager Scholera, the attorneys, and the liaisons, respective liaisons for those commissions to draft the revised ordinance to bring back for your consideration. So that also has the added benefit of allowing, now that we've actually talked about it, you know, on camera, if folks do have, you know, other viewpoints, it gives them a chance to come in and, and be heard as we're going through, as we're going through this process. But with your direction tonight, I, I will begin that process with regard to the consolidation of, of the plan and the, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Next up is new business. Does anyone have anything tonight? I'm glad you, you mentioned the.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to jump in front of Seabom.
Oh, no, it's okay, because I'm glad, because I, I'd forgotten that I, there was something I wanted to say earlier, too, as we, as we go into the, into the holiday season. I just wanted to announce that Peter Bozakakis from Riverside Foods is going to try to be here tonight. He's coming, he's coming home from Portland, but I wanted him to announce it, but since he's not here, I'll announce it, that Riverside Foods is now going to be staying open until 8:00 during the week, which means we can all rush, rush in at 5:00 to 8:00 instead of 5:00.
Yes, instead of 5:00.
So that's good to know, and I just want everybody to know that. We do have a need for an executive session tonight. On the executive session will be deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of municipal employees, consideration of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, discussion of collective negotiating matters, and consideration of the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. So with that in mind, I would ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session, not to reconvene. So a motion by Ms. Collins, second by Mr. Pollock. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Yes.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Batherin.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Meeting is adjourned.